Yes, sir.
Well, sometimes I get the trap, sometimes I get macro.
Yeah, there you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Russell County Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. Glad to have you here. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start off by an invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by Pastor Karen Seifert from Somerville United Methodist Church, and then the pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Chambers. If you will please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Okay. Holy God, we just come before you on this cool morning that you've given us, that you've blessed us with. Holy God, we just thank you for all the blessings that you do give us, the ones we see and the ones we don't see. And Holy God, we just ask that you open our eyes so that we can see everything that you have for us because we don't want to miss anything. God, as this meeting begins and the agenda unfolds, I ask that you're just with each and every person here. They give them clarity and wisdom and compassion to make good decisions for what needs to be made for this commission. God, we lift up our school systems, we lift up the children, that it is an environment that's safe for learning, that they feel comfortable and they can learn and be safe. We lift up the teachers and the principals and the janitors and administrators and all the people behind the scenes that help make that a good environment. We just ask that you have your hand upon that. And God, we just lift up our law enforcement, our EMTs, that keep our communities safe every day. God, that you would also give them that same clarity, that same wisdom, so that they can come home safely to their families in the evening. God, we lift up all these things in your son's precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not have anyone signed up for public comments. If anyone missed the sign-in sheet that are here, all right, we're going to move forward from that. Please remember to silence your phones so that we can not interrupt those that are speaking. I need to do that myself. I want to say thanks to everyone that's here today. Keith, for getting us on Facebook Live, for those that couldn't make the meeting today, and the others that have joined us, also citizens of East Alabama for covering our meetings as well. Welcome to all our elected officials and department heads. Glad to have you here. We'll start off by establishing a quorum, and we'll do so by calling the role. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. District three, Costello. District four, Reed.
Here.
District one, Lee.
Present.
District two, Chambers.
Here.
District five, Dougherty.
Here.
District seven, Screws. District six, Corbett.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We also have our attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks, with us today. Commissioners, as you know, the agenda was approved at the work session on Monday, August 25th, and that is the agenda we'll work from today. First up, we have the approval of the minutes from the August 13th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Chambers, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have proclamations. The first one, the only one we have today, is a posthumous proclamation for Mr. Donald Byss. Mr. Byss served 29 years as an extension agent in Russell County and did a lot with the trees in the county, in the city. He spoke about all the things he had done with the extension office in Russell County with some of the grass and things. As I read his obituary, I did know his son. I went to school with his son, and honestly, all those years being younger, I didn't know exactly what he did. I knew he worked for Auburn, but that's all I knew. But for his dedication in what he did for Russell County, I would like to ask today that we approve having a proclamation drafted for him and have that presented to his family at a later dated commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Lee, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any discussion or comments? I will say that I think Pastor Seifert is pastor too. I wish she was still here, but she probably saw it and had a very good funeral for him as well. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that is approved. And we will have that, when the family can come, we'll have that on the agenda for a future meeting. All right, next up, we have no discussion items, those were taken care of on Monday night, so we'll jump right into business. The first one is a budget transfer request from the sheriff's office and jail. Captain Taylor.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This was, the sheriff covered this on Monday evening, but this involves a couple of transfers from the, actually several transfers, from the jail that's moving into medical. That would be $10,000 from 212 to 306, that's out of fuel and lubricants. From 329 to 306, that would be out of law enforcement training. $4,000 from 219, which is miscellaneous supplies, that would be $10,000 also to 306. From 239 to 306, which is other repairs and maintenance, $20,000. And from uniforms, which is 327 to 306, would be $6,000. That would cover all of them for the jail. And then for the office, there's also two. They would both be coming out of 541, and that's $10,000 going to uniforms, which is 327. And $17,656 from 541 to 214, which is minor equipment, $300 to $5,000.
All right, thank you, sir. I called you Captain Taylor, I didn't mean to do that. Captain Franklin, I got the title right and then I called the name wrong. All right.
Well, I won.
You heard the request yesterday? Yeah, I messed that up. I was so focused on, I couldn't remember the title right, and I got the name wrong. He is obviously standing there for the sheriff today.
That's correct.
All right, you have a request from Captain Franklin. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Reed, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any discussion or comments, or a lot of questions? He's ready to answer questions today for you, so.
I was preparing for all of them. I got my whole book.
I got you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is approved. Thank you, Captain. Next up, we have a budget transfer request from our tag commissioner, Ms. Bowman.
Good morning. Yes, I would like to transfer $6,000 from line item 233 and $2,620 from line item 541, which is also there for furniture and equipment, to healthcare for line item, it's going to line item 122 to cover some healthcare.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Ooh, that was in unison. I'm going to go, motion by Commissioner Dougherty, second by Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is approved. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a budget transfer request from our probate judge, Glenda Strickland.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll make this fast. We're going to be doing a transfer of $2,100 from 586 to 116, $2,000 from 586 to 211, and $1,100 from 262 to 252 to cover office flies, furniture, and postage. We're also going to be removing multiple items from the asset list. We're already working with your office to document and dispose of the equipment according to county regulations.
All right, you have the request of the probate judges. There a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Reed, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that does pass unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Next up, we have the chief building inspector search committee. I brought this up on Monday night to start a search committee. I know we don't have two of our Commissioners here tonight. We've had some discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that this item be postponed until everyone's here, and we may need to do a little bit more discussion on it.
All right, motion to postpone. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that one is postponed to a later date. Thank you. Next up is the Operation We Remember program. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. At Monday's night work session, Ms. Cindy Carter with the Veteran Affairs Office addressed the commission about an opportunity to honor and remember Alabama vets who have lost their lives to suicide. The recommendation would be to allow Ms. Carter to create a display honoring the vets for the entire month of September, and for her to work closely with the maintenance director on the location for the installation of that memorial.
All right, and we had a good report from her on Monday night. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion, my Commissioner Dougherty.
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Reed. Just a little discussion, that will include some signage and some flags in a very tasteful manner inside in front of the courthouse.
That's correct.
And that will be monitored by Veterans Affairs to make sure that it stays that way she actually has a sign in the back of the room to actually show it if you want to see that. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you for keeping track of that and making it look nice for the courthouse as well. Thank you. All right, we definitely want to honor our bits. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is approved. Thank you, ma'am, for doing that. All right. Oh, yeah, thank you for being here this morning. Commissioners, next up, we have the appointed employee discipline actions and evaluation procedures. This was supposed to be for a first reading. We discussed this on Monday night. There were a couple of things that maybe we wanted to discuss as far as the assignment of those disciplinary actions, or the, I'm sorry, the evaluations, and spoke with the attorney as well. Would you have a recommendation today on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. I would recommend if we could postpone this discussion for two weeks. I've got some language that I want to tighten up in the policy, and I don't believe you've all even been able to see it yet, so I'd like to request that we postpone this to the next meeting.
Motion to postpone to the next meeting. Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Lee, postpone to the next commission meeting, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is, that passes unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving into the county engineer. Sean, do you have anything else for us today? All right, moving on. Sanitation, I didn't skip you today. Randy, we have a budget transfer request?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner and Chair. Seeking a budget transfer on $15,000 from line 561 to line 113, $9,000 from line 561 to line 121, $3,500 from line 561 to 124, $2,000 from line 561 to 307.
All right, you have the request of Randy, who's also brought that already to his board, and it's been approved. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion, my Commissioner Dougherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, or Randy, that is approved. Thank you. Madam Administrator, do you have anything for us today? All right. And Madam Attorney, you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As you all know, you have received some settlement funds from the opioid settlements that have been brought on behalf of the state of Alabama and the local governments. We have received documents where the state of Alabama has reached a settlement with Purdue for $75 million, and with, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight other secondary manufacturers for $11 million, for a total of $86 million. This will be divided between the state and local governments. I would ask that the commission approve the chairman to sign these documents so that Russell County can receive their portion of the documents.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
All right, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second to my Commissioner Dougherty. Any other discussion or questions of the attorney? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, we'll get that taken care of. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Attorney? All right, thank you. Commissioners discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lee.
We need to consider what I'm fixing to say. When we are doing budget transfers, we know what the line item numbers are, but the public does not, so I'm going to suggest that we call out the line item instead of just the number.
All right, I think that's a good suggestion. We can make sure we do that going forward without, we don't have to do anything for that. We'll just ask our department heads to do that accordingly. All right, very good. Anything else? Anything else? All right, I'll talk about this a little bit in the announcements, but I just really want to encourage everybody to please take the time to come out to Labor Day Vendor Fair at the old courthouse in Seal. This is an event that is a very good tourism event. It is supported by our tourism dollars, but also by state. Senator Beasley supported this the last couple of years, and we need to have a good showing. I have no doubt we'll have a good crowd. I know we've got a lot of vendors. They have kept me on my toes, I promise you, and really hope that everyone will come out. We've got security with the sheriff's office there, we've got parking with the Seal Fire Department. Should be a really good day for everyone, and that is actually on Labor Day. So, I'll mention that again in announcements. So, the first one is the Russell County Commission budget meeting will happen as soon as we finish this meeting this morning. We'll take care of the budget. It says 9:30, but it'll be immediately following this meeting. The Labor Day holiday closure of the county buildings will be closed on Monday, September 1st, in observance of Labor Day, and that will be also, again, the Seal Courthouse Labor Day Fair on Monday, September 1st. That is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Eastern Time. Again, please, if you have the time and can, please come support that and tell your friends and share it on your social media pages as well. On September 18th, at 4:30 p.m., we will have a shelter in place drill here at the courthouse where we actually prepare our employees for, should we have an emergency requiring sheltering. The business of the courthouse will close at 4:30 that day and has been posted for a while. We will continue to post that. The tag office will affect their hours for sure around 4:00 p.m. so that they can take care of everybody that is in line and are able to close at 4:30. So, if you have any questions about that, please call the county commission office, and they can answer those for you. Next one is Crawford Market Day, Saturday, September 20th. That, again, is the third Saturday of the month. That is from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Eastern Time at the Crawford Walkin' Trail, Crawford Square and Crawford on Highway 80. And again, this will still be the third Saturday through November, so I hope you take the time to come out to that. One more announcement, we have a Crawford area town hall meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, at the Crawford Baptist Church Diminazium, a fairly large facility there. We've done it there in the past. That will be September 23rd at 6:30 p.m. It will be just to overview things that have been going on in the county, specifically in the district, and then taking some very constructive feedback from the public as well. Hopefully, all of our department heads will either be there or might be able to send someone. We would love to have them there to be able to answer questions directly, so hope you get to attend that as well. All right, did I miss any announcements?
I'd just like to say it's predicted for Monday, Labor Day, that we'll have nice weather. We're going to depend on David to make sure we do.
That's right. Yeah, we've had one, I know we've had one where it wasn't so good. I think we had a tornado warning one year, so we don't want that, so hopefully it'll be a relief.
I hope it's cool weather stays around.
Yeah, it sure won't be as hot as it has been. All right. No other announcements that we missed? All right, so that will end the, that will end the commission meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, we don't need to adjourn.
You don't think we need to adjourn?
No, move straight into the budget.
All right, we'll just move on then. I was going to adjourn and call the other one, but we'll do it. So, we'll focus right into the budget meeting, call that to order. The first one is an overview of the proposed FY 2025, FY 26 budget. Ms. Wright?
Yes, Commissioners, I would do a quick recap of the previous two work sessions. The previous two work sessions, and if there's any questions after the overview, we can have discussion and questions, and then I would turn it back over to the chair.
All right, Ms. Wright, thank you. Commissioners, as you know, the last two work sessions, we have discussed the budget. We've heard from our department heads. Most importantly, we heard from our administrator and the work that her officer, especially our assistant administrator with our administrator, have done to balance this budget. You have heard from the appropriations aspect of it, where we're trying to cut our, cut some of our costs and trying to keep our budget within balance. And I think we had a few that were brought to us that were requested for some changes, and those are up for consideration today, but at this point, I think we should move on with the reports from the administrator unless there is ready for an approval from the commission at this point. Are there any questions or anything we need to discuss before we get to that? I think that most of the things that were requested are in the budget and are balanced. There was one department that we've discussed doing a little bit more work on job descriptions and making sure everything's in line for those increases that were requested, because I think there were some that were changing of duty, so I don't think that's going to be considered at this time unless some other commissioner wants to.
We can bring it up later if we need to.
Well, I think that they're going to work on job descriptions and things like that to make sure they're in line of where they need to be at. All right, so the first thing on the line on the agenda is the approval of the FY 26 budget for Russell County.
Oh, we hadn't had it heard from Ms. Wright.
Allow me to do the overview first and then I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely, go ahead.
All right.
I thought you had done your overview, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. The general fund serves the primary operating fund for the county commissions supporting essential public services such as public safety, general government, parks and recreation, and county services. This fund is primarily supported by local tax revenues, including avalorin taxes, county sale taxes, and other general revenue sources. For fiscal year 2025-26, the general fund is balanced with a projected revenues of $22,708,268.95 and total expenditures of the same. The fund reflects a commitment to fiscal responsibility, continue to invest in county services, and maintaining acquit, acquit reserves, excuse me. Salaries and benefits included in this budget is merit increases up to 4%. These increases were given to the employees based on the results of the employee performance evaluation process. Department heads, with the exception of elected officials and a newly hired department head, received a 4% merit increase. I also received a 4% merit increase. We were told to expect a 7% increase in health insurance. However, we were informed that the health insurance increase is only 4.75%. There are several other additional salary adjustments that were included in this budget. The EMA director received a salary adjustment of $5,000 to make his salary comparable to other department heads, and the EMA deputy director received a 10% increase based on recent certifications and obtaining her master's degree in criminal justice. Building inspection department, there were additional funds were budgeted to move the department head from a part-time position to a full-time position. Mapping and appraisal department, an additional $4,500 was budgeted to promote Mr. Jimmy Chandler to field manager. The appropriations were broken into two different categories, community partners and nonprofits. Community partners are those organizations that work closely with other county departments and elected officials. The following community partners are requesting an increase or have been added to the list for the first time. The Russell County Phoenix City Animal Shelter, the county administrator and the assistant county administrator met with the city manager, the assistant city manager, the police chief, and the assistant police chiefs to discuss the animal. the assistant city manager, the police chief, and the assistant police chief to discuss the animal shelter budget. The increase in the budget is due to computer upgrades and employee training. We received a letter from the city's finance director requesting a city budget of $92,951 for the shelter. This amount is included in the budget. The library has requested an increase of $7,500 to half of the total budget for the library. It is recommended in this budget for an increase to $10,000. Integral mental health and the Russell County Drug Court, instead of using the general funds to support these two entities, is recommended to use the opioid settlement funds for these two partners. Hope Harbor Barred Women's Shelter and Safe Kids are two new partners who have received support from the commission in the past and both have provided services to the residents of Russell County. The funding for nonprofits have been reduced by 25% across the board. As we move forward, we comprehensive and strategic planning, future budgets will reflect the outcomes of both plans. Improvements to services across the county will continue to be a priority as well as enhancing the benefits offered to attract and retain highly qualified employees. This is an extremely conservative budget, but strong in the sense of all that would be accomplished in fiscal year '25 and '26. This budget includes new county vehicles, additions and renovations of county parks and county facilities, merit increases for new employees, new furniture for offices, new computers as well as strategic plan for the county. I'd like to take a moment to thank the elected officials and department heads for their cooperation and leadership during this process, and I would also like to thank the staff and the commission office for their help and support preparing your packet. This concludes your review.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wright. Some very good report there. In fact, most of that we went over on Monday at the final piece of the budget work session. So, Commissioners, you have the report from the administrator with a balanced budget. Is there a motion to approve this budget?
Motion to approve the budget, please.
Second to motion.
My Commissioner Lee, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? Only one I'll have is, is just a glaring one that I'm going to make. I made it on Monday night, too, and that is the animal shelter. We get so many calls about the animal shelter from the public, social media posts and other things. We have a contract that was entered into way before I became on the commission, and I do, that contract specifically states in there the operation animal control will be with the city and that the county will share the expenses of that. I do want to do some work on that this year and make sure that we're doing the right thing by our citizens so that we understand, and our citizens understand, the operation and that there's a little more transparency there because a lot of times, they're just not getting calls back or they're not getting responses. So, and it's hard for us to respond to things when we don't have any control of the operation. So, I think it's definitely something that we need to take some time and look at for the sake of the animals in this county and for the sake of our citizens as well. So, I'll definitely be pushing that a little bit as a commissioner coming, this upcoming year or so. But other than that, that's all I have, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You said it was before your time, but the county started off running the shelter, and it was a disaster.
Right.
I mean, it just didn't work at all.
Right.
Then we tried running it together with the city. That didn't work, so that's when we ended up, since the city was more involved in it, to just turn it over to them. That's the reason it happened like that. But you're going to get the calls no matter who runs it, because you can't satisfy everybody on how an animal shelter is run.
Oh, I have no doubt, but I just think a little more transparency on our side, too, and people getting calls back that they're not getting calls back on, too. So, we just need to, you know, people say, well, if you're spending money, you're spending county money, why don't you have any control over it? And that's a valid question, and that's some things we need to look at, so.
We spend money on the library. We don't have any control over it.
Yeah, and not that much, though. $10,000 is a little bit different than $100,000.
Not what they asked for, though.
Yeah, they asked for a lot more in the library, for sure. They asked for half the operational, which is about $160,000. So, again, I enjoy working with the city on certain projects, and I'm not against anything that the city's doing on this, but I definitely think that we need to have a conversation about the operational side, so. All right. Any more comments or discussion? All right, will you please call the roll? Call the roll. Sorry, I tripped you up on that one.
You did. District Four Reed.
Present.
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yeah, yeah.
You tripped him up on it, too.
You said call the roll.
Need to wake up.
Call for the question. There you go.
District Four Reed.
Yes.
District One Lee.
Yes.
District Two Chambers.
Yes.
District Three Corbett.
Yes.
Forgot Darty.
Yeah, Darty.
District Five Darty.
Yes.
I won't do that to you again.
Mr. Chair, you threw me out this morning.
I'm just going to ask for a voice vote.
That was totally your fault.
I have spoiled our administrator with a voice vote. I can see that now, so. All right, next up is the salary schedule. Ms. Wright, would you present on that, please?
Yes, sir. So, Commissioners, in your packet is the salary schedule for fiscal year '25-26. It reflects the merit increases up to 4%.
All right. Commissioners, we've discussed this as well in the budget meeting. Is there a motion to approve the salary schedule?
I'll make the motion to approve, but I want to say something.
All right, is there a second?
Second to motion.
Second by Commissioner Chambers. Go ahead, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, the elected officials did not get the 4%, so I just wanted to make that clear.
That is correct, yes, sir.
That includes the Commissioners, that's correct.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the tourism budget. I'll take that one for a second. Commissioners, I presented with you on Monday the tourism budget for FY 26. You have that in front of you. The only comment I'll make to it is, it was brought to my attention that a couple of events that we sponsored this year were not included in that, and I'll bring those back to the commission at a later date, and those were the MWR events, which I think were really good. That was the Freedom Fest and the Oktoberfest, so I'll bring those back at a later date. But at this time, I'm requesting a motion to approve. The budget is stated here at 346,622.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion, my Commissioner Chambers, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, that passes unanimous. Thank you. All right, based on my agenda, that is all we have, so. Does anyone have anything else that we didn't need to bring up in the budget meeting? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion, my Commissioner Lee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.